Why don't we go ahead and assume that Kathy will be with us in a couple of minutes.
I'm not going to impose any...
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, get rolling, and Kathy will join us as she goes.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we've been, as you know, tasked with the proposed, the review of the proposed updates and revisions to the zoning ordinance for the township of Abington, and tonight's responsibility is to review the notes coming out of our last couple of presentation and review sessions and determine which should be kept, modified, removed, what have you, and passed on to the commissioners to authorize their continual analysis by the zoning rewrite committee. That sound right? Sounds like what we're talking about, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so what I think we ought to do, and anybody is welcome to jump in with a process, but is let Steve take the lead on this, and then as we go, I think we'll have some items we could, I will assume that we can just basically say, absolutely, this needs just to be reconsidered, other items we may want to add to... And so what we'll need to do as we go along is be pretty clear so Liz gets it on the letter and the, we've got notes, notes from Mark's letter, have you seen the two?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Okay, good. Steven.
All right, we've been... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don and I discussed with Larry this afternoon the process by which to present this list to you, and I think you've all had this in advance for a couple of days, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So these are the notes that both Mike and Mark took during our four meetings. So let me, I'm going to try to explain the next step so you understand what this step is. The next step of our process is to present the zoning ordinance draft to the Board of Commissioners, and the only way to really present the draft to the Board of Commissioners is to represent the work that you guys have performed through those four meetings and discussions that you guys, that we had with the Planning Commission through those four meetings. That being said, what they need is some guidance from the Planning Commission to the recommendations for changes, edits, or additions that the zoning ordinance committee should look at. So what would happen with these, what would happen with the recommendation list that you're going to come up with would be it would be passed to the Board of Commissioners, not to the zoning ordinance committee immediately. Once it gets to the Board of Commissioners, the next step for Larry and myself and Mark to do is start to schedule meetings with the Board of Commissioners and present the zoning draft. Along with that zoning draft, they will be looking at the Planning Commission's recommendations, and most likely the recommendations that come from the Planning Commission will be used as our guideline or our outline for our presentations to the Board of Commissioners, because assumingly, and I think the conversations were just, just that, which they were very detailed and very specific, and you guys, I think, hit all of the big parts of the draft, and that's why I was probably seeing that most of our conversations with the Board of Commissioners will set around your recommendations. Now, that's not to say that they won't have some other things that they want to discuss, but primarily I would want to see the conversation center around your recommendations and we work through those. And then once the Board of Commissioners were to take your recommendations and formulate them into their final recommendations, that will come back to the zoning ordinance committee. We will redraft or change the things that are asked of us to look at. We will be back to the Planning Commission to just discuss those items. It'll go back to the Board of Commissioners, and it may go through another round of changes based on that, but we'll slowly be whittling ourselves down, much like the Sweet Sixteen, much like March Madness for college basketball. We'll start with sixteen, fourteen, and hopefully we get down to two.
The half-life of uranium.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the role. So what I think we'd like to do is, we're not looking for specific solutions unless the solutions are easily accessible to the majority of the Planning Commission, but we are looking to find out if things on this list should be passed along as recommendations of changes, edits, or additions, and if they should be worded differently. So with that, I think the best thing for us to do at this point is start with Mark's letter of, starting at December, top of the, top left, it says December 4th, 2014. And his notes are chronological, so he's got notes for, you see, they're dated through the, through the actual meetings that we have. So on page one, which is from, which is from the December 4th meeting, and I'll just run through them if that's all right, Mr. Chairman, or would you?
Just a quick question. The one that marked December 4th, I thought was, were notes from Mark, and the other letters dated March 4th.
That's Michael's. This is the Planning Commission?
Mark, Michael, whatever.
This is the Planning Commission, so I was going to save that for last.
No, my, just, I missed.
So something in my evaluation period of the County Planning Commission staff.
(laughing).
That's all joking.
Sort of, so.
Wake up.
Okay.
Okay.
So if that's all right, I don't know, if you want to read them, you want me to read them, we can go through them. Some of these, some of these comments are really just Mark's notes, some of them are immaterials, they're actually recommendations. Like, if you look at section number two, it says introduction and zoning map recommendations thirty minutes.
Let me go through just to see what we got.
I don't think that's a recommendation.
No. We're going to take a look at the hundred block of Shady Lane, zoned RC, but several homes are there suggesting R2 or 3. I think the most adjacent or nearby homes are R3. Are they relatively close?
Right, so we have a choice here, we can, the Planning Commission can make a decision as to whether you think we should look at R2 or R3, or the other way to word this would be the Planning Commission is recommending that the zoning ordinance committee analyze the existing dimensional values of the properties that are in that area and see which, which of these residential districts works best.
But I thought you were saying that what we wanted to do today is simply look at each of these items and decide whether the discussion of these items should continue to the board, but not necessarily make a decision here on each one.
You're actually correct, and I oversaid a minute ago, but...
If they are simple, you certainly can make...
Okay.
I don't want, I don't want you to get hung up that you think you have to problem solve all of these things.
Yeah.
I would open, I mean, that's really the role of the zoning ordinance committee, but I would actually open that up to, I think it's also a role that the Planning Commission can, can have, have in if they want to. So I would open that up, and the invitation to any Planning Commission member who wants to work on any specific item in this recommendation list that gets passed along can work with the zoning ordinance committee to make those changes, or if they want to be involved in that specific, or one specific item. I open that, that invitation up to you.
But I think for tonight, let's go through and do, if we feel a clarification of a point is viable, let's do so to, you know, add to the point, but...
The first decision is whether to pass these items on to the board.
Right, because otherwise we'll be here for like six, twelve...
The second layer of information is, do we have our feelings about that?
Right.
Okay.
You know, it seems to me that there are some things that we could recommend right off the bat.
Sure.
For example, the first one, I mean, we could recommend, yes, the zoning committee ought to look at those, make a determination as to what the proper, you know, what the proper...
It's not just too dimensional.
Yes, as you suggested. And I, I mean, I would feel comfortable with making that recommendation tonight. So that gets, that takes that one off the table.
Right, I agree, and that's what we're talking about. Item two is not a review items.
Correct.
It's a comment. Item three, look at the land balancing application within the draft.
So remember, the next step in this process is the township should update its subdivision land development ordinance. Michael has, has a master list of items that we have either moved out of the zoning ordinance that shouldn't have been there in the first place, it should really be in the subdivision land development ordinance. There were quite a few of those things out of the ninety-six ordinance, and there are just things through experience that Mark and Larry have expressed, and Michael knows through his reviews of projects. This land balancing thing is another one of those items that has been moved...
Okay, well, I think that's a no-brainer, that needs to be considered.
Is this really not a, not a zoning issue?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll pass that on.
And by the way, I don't think, it's not in the zoning ordinance now. I think it was just something that we discussed during our meeting. That should be somehow brought up in the SALDO.
Right, and it looks like it'll probably fall into the erosion and sediment control session of the SALDO under creative purpose.
Item four, Ashley and Don have an issue with wall to opening language. We think that, I would like to see that further discussed.
Okay.
On that personally. Let's use, for clarification, so we don't get caught, Ashley, you and I can probably be part of that, let's see, just to, so we don't get, you know, certain projects don't get caught.
Yeah, I don't think you can be mathematical about that issue, so...
I just want to remind everyone to be televised, please use your eyes when you speak.
Okay, thank you. Very much.
I think further study of that would be a good idea, because I don't think, I don't think you can do a mathematical formula for what's intended by that idea, so...
All right, well, I say we'll pass it on, but I am feeling we'll be joining you in the discussion. Look at the definition for gross leasable floor areas. To me, that's a yes, just because obviously it was unclear.
Yeah, that was just the request that you use an industry standard, which is the BOMA standard.
Okay.
The definition of a family was explained at length. It seemed like it was pretty well. Does anybody have any concern about that?
So I'm going to cross that off because...
Yeah, that was just an explanation. Mr. Weggel was concerned about impervious coverage, not include gravel.
Yeah, that was the, that was in the definitions of paved area, and if it was covered with gravel, it was considered paved. You know, actually gravel can contribute to infiltration rather than, you know, prevent it, so...
I'd like that, if we do change that, to be clarified with the base, we don't just do something stupid like a hard pack base or an asphaltic base, it gets covered with gravel, it becomes...
Yeah, I guess you could, what you could do is you could specify some infiltration rate through the gravel and the under, underlayer that's significant, not significantly different than the adjacent soil.
Yeah, something along those lines. Perhaps you follow up as, I think that should get passed on, but perhaps you can follow up. Hi, Kathy?
On that issue, I did, Mike, you give it to Steven tonight if you want, but from the department, it says of environmental natural resources, but it gives examples of what could be considered permeable pavement, like gravel areas that are designed to maintain the infiltration rates of the gravel and the subsoil below that are protected from sediment loads. And then it excludes gravel areas that are subject to frequent traffic or high sediment loads and thus are unlikely to infiltrate water indefinitely, but there's like, I can email it to people too, but I just looked it up to see...
I think that, I think it would be terrific if we can follow up with those things, because what I wouldn't want to see is something getting so horrendously complex as a determined...
Well, so I think there's two steps here. So I think the step, the first step is...
Yes.
To look at the, look at the inclusion of gravel as a pervious surface. But I think the second part of this is a, is actually, is a SALDO issue, which is to look at those regulations, because I don't think we want to find specific regulations regarding that in zoning ordinance as we, as much as we want to find it in the SALDO as far as what constitutes...
Can, can we refer to SALDO?
Yeah, so I think the way we should, the way we should write this is that the recommendation is that gravel should, should be an allowable pervious surface with some restrictions, but should also be further examined in the SALDO.
I don't think it should outright, I mean, I think it, if it, it should be the other way around of what you just said, that it shouldn't be included as pervious...
Should be included as impervious.
As impervious unless it meets certain specifications. The other, I mean, I don't know if that's okay with anybody else, but...
Well, that's up to you guys to...
Okay, well, let's, let's do what we've been talking about. One, we, it should go forward as a point to be analyzed and discussed, and I can see you guys having a hand in helping analyze it. Okay? Awesome.
So we're going to list that, that it should be included as a pervious surface, but with some, some allowances.
Allowances for infiltration.
You got that, Michael?
Yeah, because I'd hate to see a whole yard gravel.
I would go the other way, but I won't argue with you.
I would as well. I would encourage people to use gravel and then test it, as Steve originally suggested.
You want the whole front yards in gravel so they can park, because you're not...
Well, that's a different issue.
Well, no, it's the same issue.
So, luckily, the best way to handle this is everybody knows a certain size of clean stone will have a greater amount of pervious of absorption than anything that has, than anything that's considered modified that has some kind of dust in it, because as soon as you put the dust factor into it, no matter what type of stone, limestone or granite, it's going to compact.
Right.
And it'll become more impervious. So that's where we have to get into the idea of defining exactly what we're talking about. Is it three-quarter inch clean, is it whatever? So I think those are things...
Yeah, I think, I, I will defer to Kathy and say that it is impermeable unless determined otherwise as using the process in SALDO.
Okay. Great.
Item eight, our favorite, roosters should not be prohibited on farms or properties over a certain size. I would agree...
I think we could word that a little differently, though, roosters...
Well, I think the point is that those over a certain size has to be clarified.
Size of the rooster?
Or they should be prohibited on properties under a certain size. Wouldn't that be an easier way to say it?
Also, so the chicken, the chicken use category, and everybody, Lucy's already laughing, and I haven't even said it twice, the chicken use, the chicken accessory use prohibits, right now it prohibits roosters, period, no matter what the size is. So I think the wording is correct, you want to, you want to make an exception that if you want to, you want to make an exception that roosters are allowable if the property is over X amount of acreage.
And did we come up with an acreage? Is it 10 acres, or did we not discuss that?
I would tell you that roosters shouldn't be allowed, period, so, but that's up to the Planning Commission.
You're no exception for 10 acres.
Well, with the, with the, if it's a farm use, I think that you need, what, 10 acres for farm use?
The potential...
See, that's where, that's my question, too. If you have a 10-acre farm, can you have a rooster?
That, that is a potential that I would think is, is a reasonable...
A 10 acres?
I think that's a reasonable way. I would hate to say that a 10-acre site could be used to have a rooster. I would like it to be set aside to actually be a farm.
Isn't, isn't the whole chicken allowance for accessory anyhow? So the rooster won't fall within that use? It would have to be farm?
The, the ability to have chickens as an accessory to the farm, is that what you're asking of?
Well, no, it's an accessory to a home.
For residential use.
What if it's zoned farm? Then is it prohibited?
No, it's still part of the accessory use.
That's right, yeah, it's, the way it's worded is foul must be, must comply with all requirements and use A5 chickens limited keeping of, except provision A lot size, and that's from the agriculture land use.
So if you have, if you have a property designated as a farm, the, there's an accessory use to that farm which allows you to hold chickens, which is that A5 accessory use, and then you're, you're working within those requirements, which says you can't have a rooster. We can put a caveat in the A5 accessory use that says roosters are prohibited unless, unless the property is designated, whatever the use category is for the, for a farm.
And with something, with some kind of proximity control to residential...
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, I think the, the reason for roosters is you don't want to hear them at 6 o'clock.
You don't want it on the property line next to your neighbor.
I guess the question I would have, I would ask the Planning Commission is, why do you want roosters?
Well, the hens.
Well, I don't know, do CSAs...
Mostly guys appear.
Have one rooster with all the hens?
So remember, the, remember, the whole, the whole idea around chickens is to, is to farm the eggs. You don't need a rooster for the eggs. You need a rooster if you want more chickens.
Yeah.
So we should put the...
So I think you should think about why you want a rooster. Rooster doesn't give you more eggs.
Might give you more chickens.
It would give you baby chicks, however, if you have a farm and you want baby chicks.
Yeah, but you can get them elsewhere.
But there is no, there is no shortage of being able to obtain chicks.
I think in, yeah, I think in an overbuilt or fully built town like Abington, I would tend to agree that roosters are not particularly appropriate.
And in 50 years, if this ever comes up again, be addressed...
Well, you'd be surprised, I mean, first of all, chickens, there are a lot of properties that have chickens in the township even though they're not allowable. I think roosters are a big problem, even on 10 acres.
I think if you did have roosters, I'd recommend a setback in addition to the minimum lot size.
That's going to be impossible, that's going to be impossible to maintain.
And that's the point, because sound carries.
Then let's just, let's just, no roosters.
I'm not in favor of roosters.
No, I said, let's just take it off the table, there's no...
Lucy's shooting me arrows from her eyes right now.
You want a rooster?
She has a rooster.
I think I'm overruled on the rooster business here, so...
It's up to the Planning Commission, I, you know, we'll do whatever we need, we'll look at any recommendations, so...
Is there anybody who has a rooster?
I would personally say, say, no, don't pass it on, we're just done. Anybody have a particular point against that?
What was it?
I would say that we don't pass it on, we don't recommend that any, that roosters be allowed on any property of any size.
Change.
Just seems silly in a town like this. All right. No.
So we're going to...
Say no on number nine.
Or eight, number eight, my apologies.
Number nine, tighten up home-based businesses and low-impact home-based businesses. That was, obviously there's yes to be, because there needed to be clarification, we had a lot of questions about which is which, and how they would apply in the different districts.
And just to clarify, I think the first one you mentioned should refer to home occupation, Use A14 home occupation. So we're talking about a comparison between home occupation and no-impact home-based businesses, both of which are accessory uses.
Are you looking for us to tighten up the language?
I think that was it, I mean, there's, we're allowed to have home-based occupation...
Which is a very unfortunate...
Is now, is now, right, right?
Right.
Right now, the home occupation allows one, one employee, is that correct? Is my recollection correct?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, it's no off-site employees.
Right, no, that's...
I thought there was one, one, the, the home business, home occupation...
Oh, home occupation, I'm sorry, I thought you...
There's one, one employee permitted, right?
Yes.
I think, I think I raised that question, and was wondering why it was limited to one, but I think the discussion afterwards sort of satisfied me that that was...
Right, but remember, I mean, home occupation is allowable in residential neighborhoods, and I think the last thing we want to see is slowly our residential neighborhoods turn over with professional office being in their houses, so...
I think primarily of a dentist having a hygienist.
Understood, but I think the same issue still stands, so...
And I think, too, we wanted to make sure it was consistent with the MPC for the no-impact home-based business. I think that was part of it.
Yeah.
Well, but although, keep in mind, that's a different animal, that's the other use, that's the more restricted use. I mean, I could see how home occupation could have, you know, no more than two off-site employees, but it's really what, what the township's most comfortable with and...
I thought the issue was parking primarily, that if you had too many employees that...
Certainly, another employee, that's another car on the street, and so, yeah, that's a concern.
So we can leave that on there, we'll take a look at it.
We need to clarify that.
Yes.
Number 10, drop-off containers in the front yards must be screened. Drop, and what, what are those?
Yeah, what is that?
I think clothes, donations.
That's what it was, yeah.
Was that, okay.
I think it's...
It's interesting, because, what's that? I think I know what you're going to say. Yeah, we actually, Larry and I received an email recently from, from the, actually, from the township manager, asking questions about whether we were doing something with those drop-off clothes containers, you know, very, quite often they end up becoming a mess because people just, they get filled up, nobody fills, nobody cleans them out, and people just start leaving bags on the side. So I think that's something we're going to look off, so we'll, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
And just driving here tonight, I heard on the radio Philadelphia is tackling that issue. It's a big problem throughout big parts of Philly, and it's, they're not collected regularly, and what many people don't realize is many of those are private businesses, they're not charities.
They're for profits.
Yes, so you...
But, but, and how do they make their money? Are they selling rag?
They sell it to rag companies and that sort of thing.
Right, yeah, or they, they sell it to third world countries with, you know, the T-shirts, dollar.
I mean, when you're cleaning out your closet, I, for instance, I don't really care where they go, you know? I mean, if you really want to get either money or credit or charitable credit back, then you can take it to, or get Purple Heart or somebody like that to pick it up, but other than that, there is a certain convenience factor about just...
Yeah. I think we're going to look at that anyhow, based on a couple of...
And maybe permitting them?
What's that?
Is it possible to permit them?
It's possible to permit them? Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things we're going to look at, there's, there's a, there's a couple of ordinances that we could tack them on to that are not necessarily zoning-related, so...
Yeah, I think this...
Remember, anything that goes into zoning ordinance has the potential of being, has the potential for, for an application for relief to be sent to zoning hearing board. You know, the last thing I want to do, I can't imagine having zoning hearing board hearings about locating a closed, a closed collection lot, so I think we have to, trying to be somewhat careful about what actually goes in the zoning ordinance and what goes in some other mechanism in township, one of some other ordinance.
One of the lines here was about front yards, and so there may be, I think what we're saying is it's going to get looked at anyway, but whether there's allowed in side yards, rear yards, what have you, or if there's more, more control necessary.
My note said to include something regarding it under Use A16, the non-residential accessory structure. I think that's what, it needs to be clear in here that it also applies to that.
Yeah, I think it's going to be addressed, period, because of a couple complaints we've received since we've had that, that's the discussion.
So, yes, okay, good, off we go.
So I guess in terms of the screening portion of it, we envision something along the lines of what you'd use to screen trash.
Yeah, I think we're just going to, I think we should just leave it as a general comment that, that drop-off, drop-off containers as accessory prop, as accessory to property uses will be...
Examined.
Will be further examined by the board.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Item 11, look at outdoor dining, the requirements, store tables and chairs indoors every night?
Yeah, this is under Use A17 outdoor dining.
What page do you want?
Like 135?
I think some of that was a discussion about, like, the restaurants that were right close to a sidewalk, bringing everything in versus, like, the conversation about Bernie's, you know, are they going to bring everything in, or vintage, bring everything in every night? I mean, that's, there needs to be some further language there.
Yeah, I think further study of that would be a good idea, because I know that, for example, on the Keswick Village, there's some places that do leave chairs out on the sidewalk after normal hours, and it's not a problem. If the sidewalk is wide enough to have passage, safe passage, it is not a problem, so I don't know why this is in here.
That's standard boilerplate language, because in some cases, the, the chairs and the tables are, are prone to being blown by the wind and they cause problems. But I think, what I would recommend here is consult with our code enforcement department, see what, what their take is on it.
Yeah, I think what, I think what we should probably look at is, if we're going to allow them to stay outside, is there is at least a minimum dimension that's, that's maintained for pedestrian traffic? I think more of the case study is, is the Keswick Village than is some other place.
Well, I think if, if it's, if it being, if it's being blown around, I think if that's an issue, then we need to address that.
That'd be properly secured.
That's a safety issue.
Yeah. And we can address that also, as far as they have to be secured every night, so...
Okay, so it's yes. Item 12, outdoor recreational uses, look at this use within the commercial districts. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Yeah, that was in regards to, say, adjunct playgrounds and such?
Yeah, A18.
Okay.
Well, just to back up, we're, we're okay with passing that on to, yeah, outdoor recreational areas needed clarification, or are we okay with use?
Um, let's see, A18. Um, let's see, A eighteen. Do we not allow it in the?
Eighteen, just says, oh.
It's permitted in C S, R C, of course.
Yeah, I don't think it's allowed in commercial districts.
Outdoor recre, play structures, C S. Such as charging for admission and attainment.
Accessory to outdoor recreation also.
Such as charging for, provided that any should be located so it's not visible from the streets or.
But we're not talking about just adding on a playground for the convenience of the kids at the movie theater. We're talking about potential for a commercial.
Yeah, we, I think we talked about it as a menu to a commercial property that may want to bring kids in, and so.
I think it's fine.
Like a medical office building wants to put up a playground.
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
Number thirteen, we're gonna pull out of here. That will be, there's actually gonna be a discussion on Thursday at the board meeting about this.
Pop-up, yes.
How to handle. I think this has been also be done in a separate ordinance.
Yeah, I think a cool idea by and large, but, yeah.
Because although it is a land use, it's really not a permanent land use, so I think we wanna, once again, going back to my original comment, we wanna keep certain things out of the zoning ordinance.
You know, in Philadelphia, we've got a lot of these pop-up things, beer gardens, regular gardens, all kinds of stuff, and some of them were just permitting as special events.
Right.
So that's one way to look at them.
Yeah, I, that's, I think, that's the best way to handle it, actually. All right, we're gonna take a look at beekeeping.
That was me again.
You got the birds and the bees here, okay.
We do not have, I don't think we have beekeeping in the ordinance round, right?
Impossible setback for the hives.
That's a great issue to tackle. I mean, that's.
We can look at that as another accessory use along the lines of the chickens, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, okay. Fifteen, side, uh, street walls for automotive services, service businesses increase the screening requirements. Where did that come from? I remember that discussion that, I see there is a potential for being a royal pain in the neck for most garages.
Well, I think it's also a potential for creating a better environment in a lot of areas where you have a garage, for example, and.
Keswick?
Exactly. The south end of the Keswick is a perfect example of a place where that would really help out.
Panzeters.
And, and others, yeah.
Is that just?
Was that comment prompted by Briner?
No, I don't think so. There was some, I think that came into the discussion as an example, but. So the question that, to me there, is that just sort of our modern sensibility, dambie-pamby sensibilities, or is it because this, you know, it's part of life, just having the, these garages and such out there? I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, how do you feel about this, Don?
Well, no, I, I mean, I agree with Ashley that we talk about a lot of non-conforming or older service stations that are just paved, and there's no definition, there's no landscaping. Like one at the.
Keswick.
Yeah, Keswick, but there's some in laws, and we came up with a lot of examples and felt that, you know, if they came in for redevelopment or something, that, or a new one, that they should have some landscaping along the frontage or some kind of separation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't, didn't we miss an opportunity at Briner, though? Wasn't there the suggestion that there be some kind of little wall along there?
There is one, but it doesn't extend the entire length of the.
Yeah, somehow it really got diminished, and it's almost totally ineffective now.
Well, and that one wasn't required. We asked them to put it in, and then they put in the little wall plants, too, the very, like, this big.
Yeah, all uses in these districts will be required to have the street walls unless their buildings are built to the street and there's no parking up along the street. So I, I think we've, I think we've got it taken care of.
Okay.
So you don't think we need to pass this on for any further?
No, I think, I think we already require what you want.
Sorry?
I think we already require in the draft what you want.
Fine, okay, we're out of here.
Now, I will say that automotive service is not permitted in the M S B C, but otherwise, that and service stations are permitted throughout all these districts.
Yeah.
If, if something, if something is already in there and we, we agree with it or we think it should be in there, can we just make that statement, too, for the board? I mean, that, that opens a big door. But I mean, in a case like this, where we've, you know, we've discussed it and.
I guess the way I would handle that is, we talked about some, we talked about some issues in the zoning ordinance or some of the ideas in the zoning ordinance that were somewhat, um, sources of conversation with the planning commission. Um, I would limit those type of opinions to those things so that they mean something.
Okay.
As opposed to just picking out, you know, one thing after another. I mean, we talked about the accessory value units, we talked about chickens as a new thing, we talked about, um, the tree replacement ordinance in the town, in, in, you know, requiring a permit and stuff. You know, there's a couple of things that we did talk about. So I think we should limit it to the, the more controversial items that the planning commission extended to and.
So we ought to keep our mouths shut if it's something we agree with and it's in there, or, or leave it in there and not endorse it, or?
No, I think, I think, but the reason I say that is because I think the assumption is if you haven't commented on it.
We endorse it.
You endorse it. I think if there are things that we know are gonna be somewhat of a conversation point with the board of commissioners and potentially the residents of the township, that having some support for those new ideas by the planning commission specifically spelled out would go a long way. If that makes sense. So I don't want you to just throw them around, you know, like they're.
No, I think if, if something is controversial, I think we ought to, we ought to chime in on it, either agree with it or disagree with it.
I agree with you. I think, I think.
If it's in there and we don't disagree with it, just leave it alone.
Right.
And if the board comes up with an issue, let them deal with it rather than us.
Right.
Okay.
If, if you have a condition that's an auto-service business that's pre-existing, that you would like to see screening in, what mechanisms are there going forward? Is it when the property changes uses or when the ownership changes that all of a sudden the ordinance becomes active at that point? How, how do you ever get to realizing something when you have a non-conforming existing condition?
Um, when it qualifies as a land development, then they would need to meet the, the code. In terms of change of use, um, I suppose that's a question for more, I'm not sure if it would. I'm not sure the change of use would trigger the requirement. It's gonna be triggered through a land development application, these changes. I mean, so, for instance, the auto dealership at the end of Keswick Village, Panzeters, I mean, unless he comes in for something, you're, you're not gonna see change on that property. So, but at least the mechanism is there for us to be able to require it when it does come in.
Also, it says some standard.
There's no mechanism for any township. I mean, these are just basic property rights. There's no mechanism for any township to go in and force anybody to do anything on their property under a current existing condition.
Mm-hmm.
Unless it's hazardous.
It also, it said some standards that you could use in discussion should other improvements be desired, you know, as a bargaining.
When you talk about there are a lot of improvements that were made already in the village center, like Keswick, um, those weren't legislated. Those were made through the initiative of the township, for the most part.
Right, right.
So is there a mechanism for connecting those two things, so that if the township would take the initiative, they would be at least the right on the part of the township to do something if it is non-conforming now?
Do you mean by getting a grant for beautification to continue it?
If you got a grant for beautification, would you have the right to do this?
Only in the right of way, but the applicant, usually you work with the property owner, and they usually do, you know, since they don't have to pay for it.
They would be cooperative, but I wondered if it's.
There's no, there's no mechanism.
There's nothing past that.
No.
No.
If you wanna start talking about eminent domain, there's no mechanism to do it.
Okay. Sixteen, C nine convenience store regarding three, three thousand square feet?
What was that?
Too small?
I believe, uh, I believe the, um, so if you remember correctly, we have a, we have a convenience store use of this C nine that has a maximum square footage or footprint of three thousand square feet. Um, the township, I guess it was a year and a half, two years ago, passed the motor vehicle fueling center, um, use group for the P B zoning district, which enabled the Wawa to be built on Old York Road.
Mm-hmm.
And that allowed for a larger square foot, square footage footprint for a convenience store. So I think maybe the question was whether we should allow for convenience stores as standalones, because remember, the motor vehicle fueling station is, is connected with gas pumps.
Well, we do have the convenience store use, but there's the three thousand square foot cap in the M S B C district. Uh, but if it's outside of the district, then, you know, then that doesn't apply.
That brings me, do we have that use in here? The motor vehicle fueling, it is in here, okay.
It has been carried over. I'm not sure there's anything to do with the convenience store unless the three thousand square feet is objectionable in the V C district.
I just don't remember seeing it integrated in here.
I hope it's in there, because otherwise the Wawa is now a non-conforming use.
Well, you had, no, you have an existing ordinance for it, but I'm wondering if that ordinance is in our draft zoning ordinance. It is, okay.
C sixteen?
Sixteen, okay. It went past, it's all.
Okay, so we, we don't feel a need to pass this on, then? Does anybody feel?
I think we're covered on this convenience store.
So the, but the convenience store for that use is what square footage for C sixteen?
I think it's forty-five hundred square feet.
A single building not to exceed seven thousand for something. All right, I'll take your word for it.
That's for, that's for a buil, that's for a building other than the, other than a convenience store.
More, okay, used on a single parcel, two point seven five acres or more.
Well, that's the thing, things got pretty specific, so.
Yeah.
I think we're good on that.
Well, I don't know. I wonder if we should finally look at it for draft.
Was C sixteen? C sixteen was ordinance.
Yeah, I know, and it's in our draft, but I'm wondering if it needs any revisions, because I don't see, where is the three, the four, oh, there it is, four thousand. But you're saying it was up to forty-five hundred square feet, Stephen?
I thought it was four thousand, I think it's on earth.
Okay, maybe when it was revised, revised. Two point seven five acres. Is that like sixty thousand square feet or something? No?
Small warehouse.
Forty, a hundred thousand square feet? I'm on it, it's page one forty-seven.
Yeah, I see what you mean. I don't, I don't see, you know, the inclusion of the convenience store, so.
Yeah, for a restaurant, fast food, restaurant, sit down.
But, but there is re, there is retail shops, so I wonder if it would be addressed.
Yeah, it's C twenty-eight. Make sure that coincides. Retail store, I don't have a minimum for that. Uh, I don't, up ten thousand, it looks like. And stores exceeding ten thousand square feet, a large, that's a large one. Uh, the little one is a small shop, C twenty-seven is a small shop or store smaller than ten thousand square feet. So I just think those three or four uses need to make sure they're all consistent with one another.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess we'll take a look at that.
No, I agree, okay. All right, seventeen, look at the minimum separation of a parking deck if not connected to another building. I have no clue what that is, though.
What's that?
I have no clue what that was.
Somebody brought that up, maybe, like, if you're gonna put a parking garage up, that's not attached to a building. I, I, I know I didn't bring this up.
So the, uh. Well, I question why you would have this in the zoning, because you have your normal setbacks and you have a building code that would, I would think, control, so.
The way the parking deck regulation, I believe, works, I'm not sure, but I was checking it right now, that there is a minimum separation between the principal use and the parking deck, and I think Ashley brought this up the last time, which.
All right, Stephen, can you speak up?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Nathan. Um, but the parking deck regulation, um, requires a minimum separation between the principal use building and the parking deck itself. Um, and I think Ashley brought this up last time, that the, the building code is suitable to handle the separation issues.
Yeah, it's not complicated.
For a parking deck, and is there necessarily a reason why the township would want to see a, a separation, which would, which would necessitate some kind of tunnel or, or bridge?
Right. So we're okay with that?
I'd say scratch this.
Yeah, scratch, I agree.
It seems reasonable to do.
Well, are we saying we want the?
I think we wanna leave it in there, I think, because we wanna, we wanna, we potentially want to get rid of the minimum separation requirement.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking, I was thinking that our current things had addressed it adequately. Current, okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's for C seventeen use, I believe.
One E, I think it is.
Well, there's one that says, parking deck shall have a minimum setback of thirty feet from the public right of way, and then there's a twen, another thirty-foot setback for something, then a minimum twenty-foot wide planting strip.
Right, if you look at under E.
Oh, there it is, E thirty foot, yeah.
Yeah, minimum thirty separation between the two structures.
Page one fifty-one, use C seventeen. I had the thirty circled.
So, yeah, and the intent was simply to, um, reduce crowding, but I think in many of these cases where you have parking garages, it's in the interest of allowing density and relatively intense development, whether it's near transit or it's a, it's a large institution, and, um, I would have no problem getting, getting rid of that.
Getting rid of?
The separation requirement for a parking garage?
E, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm like ten steps ahead.
All right, okay, yeah, we're true. Okay. So we are gonna look ahead at, at seventeen, but with the eye towards removing.
Leave it in and order to remove it.
Right. E, okay. Uh, eighteen, needs to be a provision to a restaurant to have carryout or delivery services.
Right, so I think that's clear, that's clear enough. I think we want to, we want to allow for, we want to allow for takeout and deliveries, we want to allow for takeout, but we don't want it to be a primary business for certain restaurants, certain types of restaurants. I think that was the point. I think we got it.
Correct, so that's, this has to be clarified, or?
I think that's clear.
You think the item's clear enough, we don't need to review it, or you think that you want to review it?
No, no, I think it's clear enough for us to, I, I think, I think I understand what needs to be looked at.
Yeah, fine, okay.
Yeah.
Nineteen, Ashley has another issue. I mean, has issue with five hundred minimum.
I, I wouldn't put it past Mark for right here.
Right, has an issue with a five hundred minimum separation for bars, five hundred foot minimum separation for, he likes to create a hub of activity. Uh, I would tend to agree with that personally, but I understand the, the concerns, but, I mean, you got a place like Keswick and you might have two taverns next to each other.
Keswick is a good idea of this, this being a real problem, this word in being a real problem. And you do have to think of bars as a good thing, not as a bad. That would be the point of departure for thinking about this.
Funny thing, because I was actually gonna say, you have to have the separation, because like in towns like Wilkes-Barre, I don't know if people have been there, but if you go down the main street of Wilkes-Barre, it's church, funeral home, bar, church, funeral home, bar. And if you didn't have the separation, you would have bar, bar, church, church, funeral home, bar, so, sorry.
What, what was the motivation for this? I mean?
Well, going back to the existing ordinance, the zoning requires a two-thousand-foot separation.
Right.
Of two thousand?
Making it more liberal, making it, but, I mean, there's no reason not to do away with it entirely if, if that's reasonable.
I think there's a, I think there's a market connection to it also.
Right. And also, we do have separation requirements for fast food, five hundred feet, and we also have it, I believe, for gas stations or fueling stations. I, I kinda agree with you, Ashley, in that maybe the district in Keswick, maybe you don't need the separation in whatever, what is that, M S H or something?
Village.
Of the, yeah, maybe.
Main Street Village.
Say, in, you know, those, some of those village areas that you can have a bar, bar.
And, and actually, you know, it's just become evident, even there was an article in the paper today, that the new owner of the village buildings does intend to make a little restaurant center out of that village center. Restaurant, yeah, you know.
So I think, I think you might be, I think, we, the way we probably should look at this, I think you're correct, maybe we should look at this and allow for bar separations to be eliminated in the D C district.
Yes.
And I think we may also want to look at it being eliminated in the P B districts and leave it as a minimum separation in our M S H and M S L districts. And the reason for that is because some of these M S H and M S L districts, we want to see some extension and some vitality to the length of those districts, and by having these minimum separations, you would, you could foster that idea.
Good point.
Don't you think that that's driven by the market, though?
No.
And these would become inhibitors to people actually doing what you want to do?
Well, I mean, right now, it's two thousand feet, and hasn't inhibited anybody?
I think, I, I would tend to agree with Stephen's idea of that they're a, an enhancement, because then you can spread, you know, you can stretch the district, so.
I mean, one of the reasons this is market-driven, this is probably done originally is out of the concern for nuisance bars and, and the tendency for nuisance bars to bring down a neighborhood. But I think increasingly, where you see the congregation of bars, it contributes to revitalization, so.
Right. What, what are the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board regulations? Don't they control that sort of thing in issuing?
I don't know.
Don't they control that sort of thing, in issuing, in issuing liquor licenses?
The way the liquor, the way the Liquor Control Board works is, if it's an existing liquor license in the township, it can be transferred.
Anywhere else in the town?
It can be transferred without, without approval by the Board of Commissioners. If you're bringing in a liquor license, and the township already has its allotted amount of liquor licenses based on population, that's how the Liquor Control Board controls them. If they already have, if they already have your allotted, anytime you bring in a new liquor license, it has to get approval from the liquor, from the Board of Commissioners before the Liquor Control Board will, will issue the permit, or issue the license. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wondered how much control we have over it.
Abington Township, any liquor license that comes into the township has to come before the board, we're over our allotment. That's not unusual for most municipalities, especially in eastern part of the county, if not the whole county for that.
The board would have an opportunity to say yea or nay on that before it came into the township, but they wouldn't care whether I put a bar up next to Ashley's bar.
Are you gonna have a bar restaurant, or a bar, and you're gonna have a bar, and I'm gonna have a bar?
Remember, I think, I think we should be careful here, I think we're talking about just taverns and bars, we're not talking about restaurants that have this minimum separation.
How, how do we make that distinction?
There's a definition.
Yeah, it's in here.
There's a definition, there's.
Glen Side Pub is a restaurant, or is it a bar?
I'm sorry?
Glen Side Pub, is that a restaurant, or is it a bar?
Well, that's in, that's in Cheltenham, it doesn't matter. We don't care.
The other question I had was, is this building to building, or property line to property line? I mean, you've conceivably, with the parking lots and such, you could have significant.
I'm not, I don't remember how the separation.
I think, let's just double check on.
I don't know how the separation, I guess the question is, let's answer, let's, let's step this through, so we understand, so I understand how to write this. The first question we want to say is, does, does the planning commission believe that there should be any separation requirement for tavern slash bars? If they do, do they think it should be confined to certain districts, certain zoning districts? Or should it be eliminated, or should it be something that's, something that's imposed upon all commercial districts? I guess that's really the steps questions that you want to ask yourself, and, and conclude with some recommendation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what is Roslin's, are they the same as Keswick?
Roslin is a DC district.
So, okay, 'cause in the past, you know.
Certain portion of Roslin, to, what is it, Woodland.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just thinking, in the past, there's been quite a few, uh, you know, bars.
Tavern bars.
Yeah, I mean, and it's up and coming, like, with prime time, that's a nice one, and, you know, but, we have a lot of bars in Roslin. And I don't know about McKinley.
Bars are my word.
So, you come to Roslin, yeah. So, that's where I'm a little, like, I kinda like a little bit of the separation, so we don't end up in Roslin with all taverns.
Well, so, the first question is, does the planning commission believe there's any need for any separation between taverns and bars?
Yes, I do, I don't.
I think I do.
I think I do, too.
Does that make sense when we're there?
I don't.
I, I think it's market and condition of the village center, and that anything else would be an arbitrary imposition.
Okay, we need you two on the end.
I think, I think another establishment, for example, across the street from McKinley Tavern, wouldn't be a problem, but that would certainly be within five hundred feet.
Good example.
Glenn? Give the tiebreaker back.
I'm gonna love my answer. You know, I, I definitely don't think there needs to be any separation in the VC areas, I'm debating the other, um, the other zoning areas, and I think I would, I think it needs to be looked at.
That answers the question, it needs to be looked at and considered, but it seems to be leaning towards.
So, why don't we write it this way?
Clarification of the district, applicability to where the district's.
Depends on the district.
Well, we'll leave it in here as a recommendation to be looked at further, and discuss with the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, thank you. And now it's my turn, I want to reduce the size of the offsets in the, number twenty, sorry, reduce the size of the offsets in the building length provision. My only concern is, in all these districts, this is, I think, pushing for six foot, and it just doesn't seem to mat to be, mat. I mean, I, I agree with an offset, I agree with a change in plane, um, but six foot, I believe it was, recess just seems to be excessive.
You're just gonna break in the facade, right, so it looks.
It could be, it could be a reset, it could be a recess link look, or it could be a setback of a facade, but at some point, I just think it gets to be, we sort of really nil it, you know?
And what's the linear feet we're talking about for the facade that this would apply to? Is there a minimum?
Like a hundred fifty.
Uh, yes, in some cases, a hundred sixty feet, um, and some, the setbacks that are specified here are either five, or six, or ten. So, I'm not sure if you had a number in mind, Don, for an ideal.
Well, maybe I'm visualizing it wrong, but it seems to me that you get up to that certain distance, and, you know, civic building, say, so, and then all this. Pardon?
What does it matter if you have?
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I can see a break of some sort, whereas parallel, or I can see two feet, or three feet, or four feet, or something like that, or, and back out, but it just seems, you know, where do you get six feet from, and what does it do to the design of the building?
So, it's too arbitrary a number?
It seems arbitrary.
It seems arbitrary, and it seems too large.
Can it be between, like, up to six feet, or?
I can, no, I wouldn't limit, I wouldn't limit it, because if architecturally, you want to push it way back, it's fine, you know?
So, let's, let's, let's step back a second, because I think there's also some things, I mean, the part, there are a fair amount of design standards in the ordinance that talk about open space, you know, open window space, architectural elements in most of the districts, most of the commercial districts. And, so, to support Don's, Don's idea, there may be enough in the ordinance, and just basically, based on market, market standards, that somebody's not just gonna build a flat wall.
Right, but, well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's leave it at, my suggestion is, leave it at to be examined, but with it consistency with the existing, or with the other standards in, in place, is it necessary?
I would, I would recommend keeping it in, even if you drop it down to three feet, the point is to avoid the look of big box buildings.
I, I agree, but isn't that, the question was whether that, that shows up in another set of restrictions.
Well, remember, the design standards aren't gonna talk about whether you have to offset the building and break up the vertical planes.
True, thank, okay, that's fine, good point, okay, good point.
It's only gonna break up within the, the flat space.
Right, so Michael, so, so I think your point is taken, let's, I, I agree with keeping it, I, I mean, when we did the SI district for Switchville, or edited all that stuff for Switchville Crossing, that came up, and that's sort of, all that stuff is what led to all this.
Right, i- i- if I was gonna do anything, my personal opinion would be to try to make it a deeper offset than a smaller offset. If you're gonna go smaller, then just eliminate it altogether, because over a hundred sixty feet, whether you have a three-foot or a six-foot offset, it's not gonna make much of a difference.
Where is, do you know what section you were, okay.
No, just as, as we went through the discussion, and that was kind of my mind through the whole.
Well, we can, we can look at that for, I mean, we, you know, we can take a look at that and see if Michael can come up with other standards of the.
Right, and I think, I think we can be part of that.
What section was that in?
We don't know. That's what I was looking for.
It's in various sections, um, it's, it's in the district of which it's a part, so it could be the Main Street districts, or the PB district, or, excuse me, the BC Business Center districts, it's even in the, the CS Community Service.
So, a resident had an issue with ninety-day limitation on rental vehicles?
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
I think that was a restriction on the use group, correct?
Yes, I think he was like, why, like, what if you're here for longer than that, why restrict it to just ninety days?
What was that, that was on there?
Some, it'd be the use reservation tool.
Rental?
Yeah.
If you're gonna have rental agency, here it is. Uh, business provide, business providing for temporary use of vehicles or loan a short-term lease no longer than ninety days. I mean, I agree, I don't know why that's.
Yeah, what's the rationale?
Yeah, I agree. So, let's, let's leave that in there up there, to eliminate it. Is that correct?
Say this again, so we're gonna keep?
We're gonna eliminate the terminology that says, in the current suit, no longer than ninety days for the C twenty-two rental agency vehicle, use group. Okay?
Take a look at the minimum lot size on use D twelve.
D twelve is a research facility, minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet.
And I believe Mr. Webb will have. Yeah, I did, I, I didn't know, I thought it was.
I think the idea is to try to maybe mix some of that research and development in some of our commercial areas, to try to have some, some critical mass of employment, support the commercial areas, I think that's the reason why we wanted to keep the lot size smaller, as opposed to just relying on large lots for those type of issues, so.
And I think it also had to do with the potentially, you know, toxic nature of some of the materials being used. And, and I'm open to hearing different opinions on this, and how a lot might be able to fit in, inconspicuously with surrounding use.
Right, so, I mean, I think that we can talk about, um, if there are any, there is number three under D twelve, it says, an inventory of toxic corrosive flammable carcinogenic or explosive material, chemicals, liquids, gases, or solids shall be updated annually submitted, we could also put a regulation in there that if any of those exist, that the minimum lot size has to be something bigger.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Now, keep in mind, the, the IBC is, et cetera, have, have plenty of.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the ten thousand square feet is suitable, I think the regulation is suitable, I think you're gonna find, I mean, we don't want to over, we don't want to over.
I would agree, I mean, there's so many regulations already regarding, both state and federal, that, regarding safety processes.
We don't have enough rules, right? So, if we, if we can, you want to take that off?
Let's, let's take it off, are we okay with it, how do we feel?
Yes.
He convinced us.
Anybody think it should be a bigger square footage for lots of law?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that off.
No, I, I, you know, I, I just didn't, there's research, and there's research, and I guess maybe I have a difference.
Tab, tab.
Social sciences research, and the lot size, I don't think is relevant, but other, other types of research, I think it is, but.
So, uh, number twenty-three, fracking, we'll just leave in there that we should look at, look at, or we should look at.
Correct.
Yeah, I just want.
Regulations rely.
I just want to make sure we are covered for any possible use in the township, yeah.
Yep.
I don't think we're on the more silver shell here, really.
You'd be surprised.
Have you been, have you been digging your backyard recently? And we're gonna, looking at adding language for bike shares, number twenty-four.
Yep, we have that.
Yes, we're good on that. Uh, pages one ninety-five, one ninety-six of the draft, just a heck of it.
One ninety-five and one ninety-six, one ninety-five and one ninety-six.
Oh, the single-family detached, oh.
Single-family detached, I think the.
What about the windows?
Questions here were, we've, huh?
I'm sorry, again.
I think the questions here revolved around the infill regulations, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think it was the garage rigs, um.
No, window opening per facade, et cetera, for, it was the dimensional issues to have addition or infills, et cetera, there's a bunch of things, but infills work within a neighborhood.
So, remember, the, the goal of this ordinance was to handle our infill lots, that once somebody comes in for developing a spot lot in a neighborhood, that instead of just building some out-of-place building, you know, regardless of the materials and stuff, we also wanted to make sure that there was some vernacular connection between the, or proportional connection between the houses that built, and the houses that are existing. So, I think that's part of the reason why we had these infill, we can look at, we can look at it a little further, but I think it's something that failsafes a little bit more of the neighborhood from the, you know, if everybody's house is thirty feet off the, off the setback, or thirty-foot setback, and they're allowed twenty feet, and they put their house up at twenty, I think, you know, I think we're trying to avoid that kind of sore thumb look, so.
Yeah, another term is parachute housing, we've had an issue in the county where there's a development, and there's, there's some generally common, uh, design standards or setbacks, and new development just looks like it came in on a spaceship and was plopped down with no regard for the surrounding development. I understand how you still want to promote creativity, so, Ashley.
Suppose you had a young architect like Steve who wanted to express himself.
And the client was willing.
And the client is willing. It's really hard to judge, prejudge, and write rules for things like this.
Well, he can get a variance.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, is the.
I don't think you can legislate it.
The regulations were more general in terms of percentages and awareness, so, I mean, there's, probably, I think we're, we're looking at it as being an innate, um, awareness of balance, or similarity, or equivalence, or something like that, even if you happen to have one large opening and blank wall versus, you know, a dozen openings.
Yeah, I agree with Don, we have some baseline regulations here that are, they're really guidelines, not regulations, and I think they're very helpful for neighborhood infill development, because I can think of lots of examples in Abington that are, um, very unattractive for the neighborhood, do not fit in, should never have been built there, and I'd like to avoid that in the future.
Yeah, and I think you could still do your sore thumb architecture beneath this, these setbacks.
I never used that terminology.
Talking about my sore thumb architecture, not Ashley, he shifted that to the.
Where did that terminology come from?
Well, like, in the neighborhood, you could still have a unique house, okay, that meets all these, you know, like, the setback would be sort of consistent with the existing, instead of way up close.
In a sense, it's no different than maximum heights, et cetera.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Um, but my, I think my, and this might have been taken care of, was the page that was the section numbering under eight, this use H seven, for the infill, it says number C, and then garages says C, so, I just want to make, because that confused me when I was trying to figure out, uh, what we were doing with this. And then D expansions, you know, just typo, yeah.
So, this whole discussion was over typo?
No, no, it was about what you brought up.
I think it may have been.
I'm just adding on.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna cross that out, and just put in there that we have to look at the numbering.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks. Um, Kathy, your turn, you've got a setback of at least three feet from the side property line?
Yeah, I know, I bring this up at every meeting, um, because I just don't believe that Abington doesn't have a setback for driveways from the side property line, but if it's not a problem.
This is for driveways you're talking about?
The what?
For driveways.
For driveway, yeah. I just, I, they.
I, no, I, I understand, I understand that there certainly are a number of places where you have the combined driveways, et cetera, and it's a massive slab.
Well, that you can do, I understand, then you don't, you know, if you have a combined driveway, then you don't have to be.
No, 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 they just inevitably become combined, not, you know, but they're two independently full-size driveway, so, just hopefully, like, on, on Guernsey, not Guernsey, on a Highland, opposite Guernsey. Just want, but the.
I think, I think three-foot setbacks for driveways could be problematic in our R four districts.
Yeah, I think so, and in my neighborhood, there are a lot of shared driveways, I have a shared driveway.
Shared driveways wouldn't come under this, this is something, this is like for a single-family house in Roslin, my neighbor could put it right up to my property line, which I didn't realize that, like, and, but it doesn't seem like it's an issue, so I'm willing, okay, I'm willing to drop this since you gave me gravel. So, that would be my problem.
I didn't know this was a negotiation. Oh, man, a whole different attitude with, through this conversation.
I'm just saying, if I'm the only one that feels this way, then.
No, it's, I, I mean, I kind of agree, it, it has not been problematic, but part of this is to eliminate problems from happening. I mean, R four, maybe it can't be done, but you want something for all the other districts.
I mean, you can, you can designate, you can designate a setback for driveways if the property has a certain amount of street frontage, that's a possibility, because remember, if you have a property that's fifty feet wide, and you deal with setbacks in an R four district, which.
Ten, ten.
Cough, I mean, let's say they're ten feet, and now you have thirty feet for a house.
Right.
You know, you, you kind of get some, there's some difficulty if you have a ten-foot driveway, and you have to have a three-feet off, how do, how does that work with, with the house construction?
The question there would be, is, is, three feet is too much in that, it's conditioned, but is, is the need, or is the desire for a break enough, say a foot, and you end up with, you know, sort of two-foot pieces with a, then everybody plants them with the arboretum, they become four feet wide, now you can't park, so.
Is the objection to the impervious along the line, or to parked vehicles?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, you could put, and then you'd want to put your fence up, and there's, you know, that right there.
Well, the fence, I mean, if you're gonna put a fence up on your property line, you have to move it.
A foot in.
You have to move the purpose off anyhow.
Yeah, so that, that falls in with Ash's marketability, yeah.
I don't know, I just.
Hasn't been an issue.
Well, apparently not, I just can't believe it's not an issue. I guess somebody's done it, because if.
I guess somebody's done it because if you have your scenario with the 30 foot off of the 50 foot, you're going to want to come in right to your garage, which is 10 feet off, unless you want to.
On my property line, although I have property next to me that has nothing on it, so it's easy. The deer, the deer doesn't seem to mind.
I, I don't know. I, as I said, if nobody else agrees, I.
I think it's an issue, I think it's, the three foot setback would become an issue on smaller properties.
I want it to be five.
Looking for a, if you were looking for a setback, if the planning commission chose to recommend some type of setback for impervious, I would suggest that the planning commission suggest a lot width at which that setback becomes the regulation. So that would be my suggestion, if that's what the planning commission would like to do.
Or lots wider than some given amount.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't like pervious paving all the way up to the side.
Well, we could just prohibit pervious paving, impervious paving, whatever the township would like.
Gravel. How do you guys feel about, say, the lot size issue?
I don't have a problem with it.
The only way it would work to me, it would seem, would have to tie it to a lot size.
I think something should be written. And at three, I think three feet is fine and it should be tied to the.
I don't think, I think three feet is.
I just don't know what that should be.
For three feet, I would, I mean, I guess I would look to maybe, not that anybody else can't answer the question, but what would be a suitable lot width? 70 feet?
70, 80 feet, probably.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, the minimum lot width in the R3 is 75 feet.
That would be it.
Well, it could be for a single family.
If you want another example, I've got a 75 foot frontage. I'm in, technically, I'm in R2, but I should be R3, but that's a different story. None of the houses on my street are centered on the lot, so I got a 15 foot setback on one side, a sunroom in the house. I have a driveway that touches my house, and then I got about three feet to my neighbor, and they planted a garden right up to my edge on my property. So my wife yells at me when I shovel the snow onto it, and I say, I don't care, I'm going to move the snow somewhere. But I, other than that, it's just, it's not, just not an issue.
I don't see, like, for a single family house, I have probably the smallest lot of anybody in here. I think it's 5,000 square feet, if that, with maybe a 50 foot frontage, I don't know, I know it's non-conforming. But my driveway is, you know, at least 10 feet from my side property line, and then they could, and then I, then I, we added a little bit to it, so we're still separated from our neighbor because I wouldn't want to pay.
10 feet?
Yeah, for the, for the ingress into the curb hut. That's at least 10, 10 feet.
I just think, I think it's, I mean, it's wonderful, but I think it's excessive to require that, yeah.
So I would, I would make the suggestion that we should probably look at, if you had 70 feet and your setbacks were 15 feet on either side, I think when you get into R2, R3 or.
Maybe do a staggered 1, 2, 3, 5 foot.
Well, the, yeah, the, the R2 is minimum 75 foot lot width and the R.
What's the setbacks aside, the side yard setbacks?
Uh, let's see.
Is it an aggregate?
R3 side yard setbacks, 12 feet.
Minimum, or just 12 feet?
12 feet minimum.
So 24 feet off of 75, you're at 50, 51, is that right?
Yeah.
I know, it's a little.
Yeah, I, okay, I think the point is here, it should be.
51 feet, I think 51 feet.
The point seems to be it should be reconsidered or considered to see if there's any.
We can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then decide on a, on a staggering.
Where is the shared driveway issue addressed? I mean, I'm for this, but how do we address the shared driveway?
Well, we're going to have to, we're going to have to look at that also, because right now it wouldn't be addressed because there's no minimum, there's no setback on driveways.
Right.
But if we're going to have a setback on driveways, we do need to address the shared driveway issues.
Okay. Yep. A lot of shared driveways.
Item 27 regarding resident was, wanted, language to clarify, vehicles have to be parked on the driveway and not on or in this, in this case, on the front.
So we're going to, we're going to leave, I think we should leave this on here for something that the board should take a look at in zoning ordinance committee. There have already been some discussions as to whether this falls in that category of something that shouldn't necessarily be in the zoning ordinance, but should potentially be something that should be addressed by the township in some way, shape or form. So that's discussions we'll have, so I think we leave this in there.
Okay.
What, hmm. Asha? Well, I was wondering, what other mechanisms would there be for enforcing something like that?
Property management ordinance kind of thing? Property maintenance ordinance?
Yes. So remember, I'm going to give you the scenario so that you keep this in your head. If it goes in the zoning ordinance and somebody wants to park their vehicle on their front lawn, they can come to Larry or Mark and file a zoning application for a variance to park their car on the front lawn. And these are not exactly the things that we want the zoning hearing board to be dealing with. It's not specifically quote unquote the land use, I think, that is intended to happen in front of the zoning hearing board. So I think it's, we have some questions as to whether this should be handled. I believe there's enough evidence that there's a concern about this issue and people parking vehicles, whether they be tagged or untagged on, on pervious property and grounds and lawn space. So I think there, I've had some issues in my ward, I know there have been issues in other wards. So I think it's something that should be addressed. I don't think, I'm not, we're not, I think some of us are not convinced that it should be in the zoning ordinance, but something that should be convinced, that should be addressed.
Okay. All right.
All right, we're jumping into the next section.
I think we should skip note one, obviously.
Correct, yeah.
Building code link to commercial districts requiring for fire protection and non-combustible materials. Note two, so if you're aware, the township has an ordinance where any construction in a commercial district, including the AO district, has to be built of non-combustible material regardless of what the zoning, regardless of what the ICC or IBC says. It is the desire of the fire marshal's office to continue that, so there would have to be some editing of that ordinance to comply, to comply or to coordinate with the zoning district changes that we're making in the ordinance, I think is what that note talks about.
Do we have any further understanding of what, what's intended there? Because the building code takes care of these problems. Is there something more that doesn't meet the eye there?
I think the fire marshal's office is concerned about the safety of the volunteer firemen. I think the fire marshal's office is, I think the fire marshal's office is, and I'm not going to speak for them, but I think that's their primary concern is the, is the volunteer firemen and the safety and welfare of the people living in there. I, I think there's a conversation that could potentially happen, that the building code handles some of these issues, but I think that's more of an educational conversation and, and discussion that could happen between, with the fire marshal's office. You know, it's, it's been on the books for a long time.
Well, I, there definitely should be a proper coordination of whatever the.
It should what? I'm sorry.
Should be proper coordination between our, our language and desert, district designations and pertinent code sections, you know, applicability, but at Ash's point, and yours is familiar with it as, as we are, which is the, certain, you know, certain building types of certain scale etcetera are required to be non-combustible in different levels anyway. So how does that, are we talking about superseding that then?
Yeah, I, I mean, first of all, let's be clear about one thing, this is not a zoning issue. This is really a coordination of the language. There's a separate ordinance in the township, I forget the actual number. There's a separate ordinance that was passed by the board of commissioners years ago that says anything in the planned business district, anything in the SC district, TC, mixed use and AO district, any construction has to be non-combustible. It's not part of the land use, but it connects to the land use designations of those zoning districts. The conversation here is that the fire marshal wants to make sure that when we do, the zoning ordinance rewrite, when we actually get to a final draft and the draft is adopted, that along with adopting that draft, that the zoning ordinance, that that ordinance that he has for non-combustibility, the language gets carried over to coordinate with the zoning districts and the zoning ordinance. That's the conversation here. It's not really, it's not really a zoning conversation, it's just a coordination issue. The building code aspects that Ashley's talking about and Don talked about and that Larry and I have talked about in the past are conversations that could be happened, that could happen, but not part of this process.
So we just leave it, there has to be coordination, okay?
Is that, okay, do you understand?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just advocating that the building code is the place to address that.
The building code, I think it's something that if, if certain members of the planning commission want to have that conversation, certainly a conversation, a meeting could be set up between the code officials in the township, Larry, myself, the fire marshal's office, and we can discuss that further.
So my understanding that Abington's code is more stringent or stricter than the building code?
Yeah, so to give you, to give you a good example, so for instance, if you were building an apartment building in an AO district, the current zoning code, the current building code, excuse me, the building code would allow you to build, I know up to four floors, I know up to four floors, I think in some, some cases you could go up to five floors in frame, in wood framing, assuming the building is sprinkled. In Abington, that would not be possible, it would have to be steel framed, it would have to be, have to be non-combustible construction.
I watched the building.
Also, it would have to be sprinkled, but it would have to be non-combustible structure.
Let me just, I don't want to move this along, but they had, look what happened in.
Ryan O'Neal.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of.
And they were, they were luxury.
It went right up.
So it all framed with frame, and that's what happened.
So I mean, I think it's, it's a conversation that could be had, it's not a conversation that should be had as part of the zoning draft. It is more of a code issue. The only point here is to make sure that the zone, that the ordinance gets carried over to coordinate with the new districts.
Were these exceedances that were part of the new, that were accepted as exceedances when the new building code was put in place? Because we do have a state building code.
That's correct.
This, this ordinance was passed before the, before the UCC passage.
And they say anything more strict, they, they have to accept.
Ashley, pull your microphone down.
I think to add to what Ashley's saying, my understanding with the building code is when you adopt it, you adopt it as is. If you want something more stringent, you've got to adopt it with amendments.
Correct.
Yeah, I think those provisions that were restricted, anyhow, I don't want to get into.
That's exactly what happened.
Yeah. I, I understand, believe me, I understand, I understand the conversation. It's not, it's not a conversation to occur in this, in this, in this.
So it's, okay, so it's not part of our conversation, needs to be addressed.
Something the township should maybe think about.
Yeah, all right. Item one in this new section?
So, yeah, with the community service district, look at the use H12 form seasonal as a conditional use hearing.
Yeah, I guess currently it's allowed by conditional use.
Is it conditional use now for?
Uh, let's see, it's H12.
Yeah, it's, it's allowed by conditional use in the CS district currently.
And is that seen as.
We do the.
Well, maybe it's, somebody say, maybe permitted by right, or do you want a conditional use on it? I don't know.
I'd leave it as either conditional use or permitted, a permitted thing.
Seasonal is only temporary, right?
Uh, yes.
It's kind of like the pop-up thing.
Oh, because it says farmer's market, temporary or seasonal.
Right, so the question is, does that want to not be, do we not, do we want to take out the conditional use regulation and just let it be allowable in the CS district, I think was the question.
I don't remember much.
I have, I have no issues with that as long as there's got to be, there would soon be some either permitting or other control or is it of that? Or do we see a need for other control of that? Kind of like the pop-ups, you know?
Well, I guess the, like the Glenside one, the Jagged Town one, do we have any farmer's markets in Abington? Because I know the.
They used to have one at Health Foods.
Yeah, occasionally, yeah, but that's not like every weekend?
Every Thursday.
I know the health department, like, looks at the food stuff.
Farmer's market, temporary seasonal, an outdoor market open to the public operated by governmental agency or nonprofit corporation or one or more producer, where farm products shall be transported no more than 150 feet to reach the market. This shall be a rule to be enforced by the market manager. That's the H12 use group that we're talking about.
So is the question to be looked at, if we're going to look at anything, is to take it out of the.
Should it be allowable or should it come, should it come in front of the board for a conditional use approval? I think the issue is going to be, I think the issue is going to be, I mean, there's not a whole lot within the use regulation for the board to restrict under a conditional use.
I would say let's keep it in and examine it, see whether, how we want to address that.
Okay. So we'll leave that in.
That's the decision, yeah. Look at the St. John's property and the zoning of this property currently is R4, you want to see it as CS, it's kind of an island of it to itself.
Oh, yeah, that was me.
But what if they get rid of it all and blend it and rezone it, I mean, redevelop it?
Well, currently it's R4.
Right.
And there's similar properties nearby that are zoned CS, like Roslin Elementary School, the Center School, Willow Hill School, the Cemeteries, Highland, I guess that St. Michael's.
What page is that?
Oh, I'm looking at the zoning map.
Yeah, where, in the book?
In the back, all the way in the back.
340.
There's the proposed zoning map and the existing zoning map.
Okay, well, we can look at it.
Yeah, that's what basically you said, or that was said to maybe look at. But one other thing, when I was re-looking at this, this weekend, I don't know if we want, Ardsley Wildlife Sanctuary, that the township portion, I don't know if we want to rezone that to R3 or, or not, instead of R4, which it currently is. I don't know how much of a.
Is it the township own property?
Yeah, you know, by Hillside Cemetery. It's R4 on page 343.
I think that should be, it's like the one next to me on Island Avenue or.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's currently R4.
Yeah, and I don't know if, just to make it, yeah, I mean, it could go either way because you can't do anything on it anyway, but it would be.
That's a good point.
And it's almost right, well, you know what, there's that row of houses, I was going to say, it's almost across from Ardsley Park, which is green, and Roslin Park.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at St. John's and we'll take a look at the Ardsley.
Yeah, okay.
All right, item three, look at certain percentage of the building, front facade at certain height. Age, I don't think it means age. 20 feet within the MSH district? How is that?
I think it was a design standard that talks about the height of the building in the MSH district.
Oh, that's right, thank you very much.
That requires it to be a certain, the front facade to be a certain percentage of it to be at a certain height. Which would be like a two-story height, and the reason for that was to create some kind of scale in those MSH districts, which are high intensity main street districts.
Right.
And I think there was some question as to whether that's something that we should regulate, even though that some of those buildings may be one-story.
Right.
I think it was, if I remember.
Yeah, that's right, my concern whether, for instance, the Wawa's, the old Wawa's is an example.
Certain architect brought that up.
Pain in the neck. Yeah.
It wasn't me, I only do, I only do crappy houses and blocks.
Well, it's, I forgot this was.
Well, since this is really.
You're going to edit that out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is really, this is really aimed at the MSH district, high density, and I think it has some applicability there, I'll change my.
I think the concern from Ashley, not to put words in his mouth, I think the concern was we're requiring 20 feet, which is around a two-story, and some of these buildings may not actually be two-stories, and they're tied into a certain building height. Is that correct, Ashley?
I think it's hard to regulate aesthetics, and it's hard to formulate it.
Yeah, I think it was more of an attempt to regulate scale than it was aesthetics.
Okay, well, that's a nicer word, but...
Well, that's really what it is. I mean, the MSH districts are high intensity areas, and I think the idea was to create a certain mass of, mass scale within the buildings that are on the MSH districts, so.
It's a nice idea.
This would probably lead to the use of two-story minimum buildings anyway, just because if you have to build it, you may as well build it.
Say that again?
It may lead to a design decision to go two stories, just because if you have to build a certain height, may as well put it in there.
And we originally started out talking about a minimum two-story height, and frankly, and, you know, different people may have voiced opposition to this, but Matt Lahaza too, was one of the proponents of not having that minimum two-story height, because things can look suburban and still contribute to the character of the area. So, yes, we settled on this as sort of a compromise.
So, let's just keep it, not worry about it. Ashley, how do you feel about that?
Well, you know, I think that when you begin to look at Main Street high antelope density, you do want to sort of project what these regulations lead you to, sort of as a comprehensive plan idea, and then go back and write text amendments and all of that to support a comprehensive plan idea. And right now, I don't have a clear feeling of what that idea is.
Well, I do think that's compatible with things like the Old York Road study. Granted, the MS district is not just on Old York Road.
Right. But we can move on, that's fine.
Okay, accept that. Number four, look at adding group home use to, in the MSL, using E7.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
An issue with that?
What?
Group home?
It's allowable in the MSL, I'm not exactly sure what that is, so we're going to scratch that out.
Five, fix page 49 of the draft pertaining to 7,500 square foot for residential use, MSVC. If there's a problem with that, then that just stays, because we have to address it, right?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the conclusion on the 20 feet height? Are we leaving that in here, or was it something?
Leave it in.
Do we take it out, or are we leaving?
I think we'll leave it in for discussion.
Oh, leave it in for discussion or accept it?
I would advocate that it's in for more discussion.
Okay, leave it in for discussion, and you and I will be on the, and anybody else who cares.
And, yeah.
You'll allow this.
Right. Page 49, the draft. In the MSVC district.
Oh, just, that was a simple editing issue, there's a line drawn there, that's all.
Okay. Was this for board? Oh, I see, there was just a line that had to be taken out. I got it. Now I have it. Can you see that?
Yeah, the line seems to prove, yeah, that's all that was.
Dimension requirements should be, should be a page each for MSH, MSL, and MSVC.
That was a recommendation for...
Not an 11. Oh, separate them?
That was a suggestion, we had a long discussion on the usability of this kind of page setup, as opposed to just, just do a page for one, page for the other, page for the other, so that you could more easily just...
Don't like to hold out?
No.
Well, I think one of the...
Well, that's where it came from.
And that's, and that's fine, I mean, one of the things I thought was actually useful with this is you can compare across districts, whereas you can't do that if you break it out as easily.
Yeah, you can, you can, yeah, you just kind of go with that.
I remember the conversation on this. We said this was great for the draft, so we could compare it, but for the final, or the, it should be listed separately, because a lot of the lines are mixed up, and we should also define class.
Okay.
Maybe by a footnote, define class.
Class one, class two.
Yeah. I mean, it is talked about a little bit in the text, but it would be nice to have a note right here. Let's see, percentage of building at certain height.
All right, we'll take a look at the charts, too.
Okay.
Dimensional requirement increase from 10% in the MS district for multifamily homes.
She was on a rule about the reducing, reducing the amount of impervious if you, within one of the, I don't think of it, rewards for certain development type?
Yeah, for the multifamily use.
But to us, I mean, at the time, my feeling was it was all, all these issues are offset by other benefits, so.
That's right, I mean...
I mean, I suppose, if anything, I would, I can see how there would be, you know, some raised eyebrows over the fact that there'd be much lower proportion of green space required. Maybe we could do something like bump to 15 or something, I have enough feeling.
There was a strong opinion on the other side that, like Don just said, that there wasn't an offset, and I think we tended to disagree. These things balance.
So I would say if you're going to look to increase to 10%, that it should only be done in the MSL districts. The VC districts, which is our Keswick and Roslyn, you know, for the most part, it's an academic conversation because of those properties.
Yeah, the urban character of the area.
Under 10%, I think your only opportunity is to capture some space in some of these MSH districts that could potentially pick up a little bit more green space percentage. So I think if you were going to do it, I would think that we would only look at it in the MSH district, then, yeah.
I would agree.
In the MSL district, it's 25% already anyhow, so. So if you wanted to bump the MSH, that might be something the planning commission could recommend, or we can leave it at 10%.
My other thought with the H district is we're looking for a higher density and somewhat more, I mean, it's a, exactly, higher density district anyway, so it's appropriate. Do we have any sense about that, anybody?
Was, what page is that?
They're on page 49, 49 to 50.
Oh, really? No, that was the, oh, okay. So that, oh, we're still on that, I'm looking for some other regulation. Okay.
49 to 50 is the...
Okay, the matrix, yeah, that we just talked about, that, okay.
All right, let's have a further discussion on those two districts. This is all, this is how...
So I'm going to just put here possibly, possible change in MSH.
Right. MSLM wants the green space requirement increased from 10% in the, it's the same thing, sorry about that, for multifamily units.
The next one is number eight, hotel motel use, conditional use, or special exception?
I didn't want...
Not used by right. That was a whole discussion basically on security and transients.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be where the hotel motels are allowable, that they be allowable.
I agree.
I agree.
There are considerable amount of dimension requirements, so.
Right.
Larry, the one in Roslyn, the motel, is that?
Motel.
Well, that would fall under this, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, I guess that's why it might have been thought about as allowing it by special exception or something.
I'm not sure that's the reason.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I'm just saying, I can think of one.
No, it was, it was the idea of having strangers walking around your neighborhood, you know, it was just like, I mean, you've got bars and people and neighbors who you don't know, and they're strangers, so we're...
Strangers are not allowed in.
Medieval town.
And I, again, would like to have dimension listed for the offsets.
I like that. Okay, so number, yeah, what's that, do you remember what that was?
For the offsets, again?
That's the same, we already discussed that one, didn't we?
Well, it sounds like there's no, oh, you know what, I think that may have been in the more general regulations where we don't specify it.
I think that's the same, because we started going through, remember, we went through, we went through use and, remember, as you look at this, we went through the use and the use regulations and the definitions, and then we also went through the commercial districts. Now we're going through the commercial districts, I think it's the same conversation.
Same conversation, but I'm thinking there was not a definition, or was not defined as a...
Right, so we have that already covered.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's a common comment.
Claims that the increasing density impervious coverage sanitary sewer use and/or no holding developers to their share of the impervious, that's just a comment.
Yeah, I think we disagreed all, we disagreed with that.
Well, look at 11, the 11, I think Steve did a good job of this.
Well, the last sentence says it all.
Just the last sentence.
Steve.
What else?
We will not repeat. Number 11, number 11 is just a edit, is a comment.
Comment.
I got to tell you, it's great to, it's great to read marks.
Mark does it.
He told me he's getting more and more tired.
Number 12 should come out, because that's part of the DEP regulations.
Right.
Sure.
He's just supposed to edit this.
Add a definition for site triangle?
Unless you guys have some issues with the shared parking requirements and shared parking incentives that we have in accordance.
I think it's a good idea.
Number 13 should be crossed out.
Yes, we do.
Yes, exactly.
There's an example in there, and there, we did some discussion.
It's a good idea.
Add definition for term for site triangle.
Should that be S-I-G-H-T?
Yeah, it should be.
Exactly. That's a shame, poor Mark.
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave that in there. Kathy wants additional protection for historical buildings as related to the bonus system listed in the VC district. I think, stated that there is language that can be added. I don't remember exactly saying that.
I remember it, Mark remembers it.
I think what we wanted to do was actually get the conversations that we've had.
Yeah, I was actually not here for this night, I'm sorry, I missed the whole conversation.
Yeah, it was for the bonus point system.
Right.
So, and I said something to the effect of...
I think the bonuses can be added once we have...
Well, it's in there.
Right.
But it should be expanded a little bit.
Okay, all right, we'll look at it.
There's discussion of historical buildings, I think it's in the floodplain overlay, there's a whole section in there talking about historical buildings.
And I think in part that's looking to the future, so should an historic inventory be established, then it will thus apply to that.
Okay, so we're going to look at that with an eye towards enhancing the bonus system?
Correct.
Okay. 16, look at the impervious coverage allowed within the triangle tract, 80 versus 85% versus 25% green space requirement.
So everybody remembers the triangle tract is the Noble Fairway area, right off, between the fairway, the train tracks, and Old York Road.
On which side? I mean...
On the...
Train side, train station.
On the train track side.
On the train track side, but the train track, we've got two sides of the train tracks. On the residential side...
The opposite side of Old York Road, where, basically where the Chili's, where...
And that's sort of a park.
Yeah, where the Barnes and Nobles used to be, where the old spin crust is, the four or five-story office building, that whole area, that triangle area.
But the residents are on the other side of the tracks.
The resident sites are on the other side of the tracks.
I mean, if you want to put a buffer in, couldn't you put it on that side?
We're not really talking about buffer, just talking about the green space requirement versus impervious coverage.
Okay.
It seems like there might be something with the, off with the percentages, because if we want to have 25% green space requirement, and then it looks like impervious is 80 to 85, maybe, I don't know.
And the following is...
Paving?
What should be, what should be...
So it's not impervious?
Okay, look at impervious coverage allowed. So you're allowed 80 or 85% impervious coverage?
No, you're allowed 80 to 85% paving.
Paving?
Yeah.
Okay, this says impervious coverage, that's why, but that still could be...
Where do you, where does it say impervious?
Number 16. It says, look at the impervious coverage allowed within the triangle tract.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
80 to 85% versus the 25%.
I got the confusion, so what it says is impervious coverage is 70%, and in parentheses it's 75%.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, I think it should actually be 70.
Well, no, I think the confusion is that paving can be impervious, and so maybe we just need to spell that out more.
With, like, at times, remember? If it's a gravel thing, then...
So you can allow more paving than you allow impervious, and so we just need to explain that, so people aren't confused.
And I know the open space definition allow, 80% of it has to be green, but 20% of it could be like for walkways, or, you know, put a bench on a concrete thing.
Right.
In the definition section, so I think it was, the percentages didn't seem to add that much.
Yeah, I understand. So I think that, I think that the solution is to clarify, you know, paving and impervious are not the same thing, and specify what we're allowing.
All right. Number 17 goes along with the triangle area.
Start that with a proposal.
We'll look at, see what kind of ideas we can come up with.
Right.
Is SEPTA, because SEPTA is going to be doing something there, right, eventually?
Yeah.
Pay on the other side a little bit, part of it?
So the first thing that SEPTA is going to do is they're going to raise the train station, so that it's platform height, where it's walk-in, you know, so it's all handicap accessible.
They're going to keep existing...
Yeah, that's my question, exactly. The existing station is a historic station. They can be adapted to what you're talking about, has been done before by SEPTA.
Yeah, I can't answer that question. I don't know their exact plans, but their plan is to get the platform up at some point. Their plans are also to add more line, more trains to the West Trenton Line, and make it more of a hub location, potentially put a parking garage at some point intertwined with the TOD study that the township has done. Pendotta is going to actually redo the Noble, the Old York Road Bridge over the train tracks at some point, you know, it just keeps getting pushed back. So there are a lot of plans for that area.
But, I mean, do they own, where they can buffer more from the houses on the other side?
Yeah.
Especially with more trains coming through.
The last plans that I saw related to the Noble Fairway train station was that they were going to eliminate all of their access points and property of any kind of impervious coverage on, I guess it's the south side of the train tracks where the residential and...
The downside.
They had talked about potentially converting that into some kind of like small walkable park along the train tracks.
They'll have to extend their siding that far if they're going to add another train. That's one of the things they'll have to do.
Oh, that's true.
They'll need a third track. So, if they're using that, if they're planning on using it as a terminus, that's probably one of the things that they'll want to do, and they will use that area to do that.
Right. So that's, but I, you can't speak to any specific plans, because I don't know that there are any at this point.
Right, well, my point is, do we need to put in some kind of buffer requirement in this district from the houses?
Triangle tract, yeah.
Yeah.
We have it in there to address it, to look at it.
Okay, yeah, that would be my concern, if we could have a pretty good buffer.
We have to decide whether this is something that'll sit in your zoning ordinance, or somehow will be able to be negotiated with SEPTA during their renovation.
Yeah.
We talked about historical buildings. You know that train station is a Frank Furness designed building?
That is, that one is?
Yeah, Noble Station is designed by Frank Furness.
Fasterized, but it's nice.
Yeah, I went to a meeting they had several years ago, and at that time, they were sort of non-committal on what they were doing with the building. So I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what the current status is.
I can't tell you, I know the exact plan, so I don't think they know at this point. Yeah, I'd recommend continuing to raise the issue at public forums. I mean, you could preserve it, you could move it somewhat, you know, maybe they could get involved with that, but, yeah, I mean, certainly one of the...
Or leave it in place and maybe build something to the side.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's move on, because I would like to try to get through this tonight.
Okay, staff, do you want to go through that?
So staff notes, I'm going to go through these quickly. We talked about review description of bar tavern sales, 25% to 50% alcohol sales. I think we have to look at that, that's part of our staff reviews, and whether that's enforceable and how it's enforceable. I think there's some questions. Number two, copy change of LED signs six times per minute. I think we're going to look at some of the zoning hearing decisions and how some of the things have been workable throughout the township and see what number that should be.
Or lower than that?
What's that?
Up to that or lower than that?
Lower than that.
Height to three or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Political signs, as we had described in our meeting, we're going to, we're going to confirm our assumptions based on our conversations with both solicitors, that political signs could not really be regulated, period.
Yeah, I think the draft under political signs has some of the older language that's no longer relevant, so that's what, yeah, okay.
Off-premise signs and billboards, we've consulted with our, the solicitor who's working with us on the billboard fight with the developer, and with our current, with the actual township solicitor, and we're in the process of looking into rewriting our off-site, off-site signs and billboards, so, so that we can better protect the township going forward. Floodplain regulations have been reviewed by the county, and we actually exceed the requirements based on the model ordinances that have been passed down from the...
Yeah, they're very tight.
Which will move us on to the January 26 meeting. Number one, review sections 1301A, 1301B, and 1301C, RC District. Number one, review sections thirteen oh one A, thirteen oh one B, and thirteen oh one C, R.C. district.
Okay, so I don't see a C, but thirteen oh one is uses specifically prohibited?
And that's under what page, eighty...
Sixty-nine.
Eighty-sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, okay, almost there. Sixty-seven?
A is accessory uses and B is signs.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we would be looking at that.
I have a note in my thing here, it says confusing to be revised, it's thirteen oh one.
So in addition, thirteen oh one reads, "Use specifically prohibited, in addition to uses prohibited in the use matrix. The following uses are also specifically prohibited, accessory uses involving..." Oh, I think I know what this is.
I think it was a carryover or something.
Too many prohibitions.
Yeah, we don't need anymore.
Signs is permitted in the sign, except as signs. I think the point is, if the accessory use is not permitted, then it should just be in the use regulation that it's not permitted.
I, and...
And if the sign is, except as permitted in the sign provision, if it's permitted in the sign provision, we don't have to say it in here. I think it's, I think I remember this conversation.
And take a slightly differing viewpoint. The business, I mean, I think, I think there's no harm in making reference to business operations, accessory use being prohibited. Just in case there's some accessory use proposed that somehow doesn't fall in the specific use categories that we've already defined. But, you know, I don't see either one of these being terribly problematic. Take it out, that's fine, leave it in, that's fine.
This seems like a thickly written.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Thickly written, prohibited except here, and it's like...
Yeah, like signs except as permitted, and it makes no sense.
Well, it does make sense, because...
We'll remove it, we'll make sure that there's no ramifications.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then the two thousand and six, I have a note put to put or as amended or something like that.
As do I.
Yeah.
Same note.
Yeah.
What's that?
So add the words on section thirteen hundred C, after the two thousand and six, add the words "or as amended."
Or as amended.
Or something to that effect, yeah.
Cool, good, like that.
Because that might be updated soon.
Okay, thirteen hundred C. Then review the Riparian Carver... Sorry, am I dropping? Number two, review the Riparian Carver overlay as related to properties that are a hundred percent within the floodplain, i.e. Roslin Park.
Why?
We'll do that.
When I say yes, so...
Number three, define term bank full, flow, floodplain district, we'll do that.
Yep.
Prohibit uses with the hundred-year floodplain retention versus detention basins. We'll take a look at that. Installation of public utilities within the limits of the hundred-year floodplain, recent sanitary sewer lines, water lines, and the like.
That's permitted now, right?
I believe they are permitted now?
Yeah. I don't know what, I think I was not here for this meeting.
I think that was Mark's request.
Yeah, I think it was Mark's request, too.
We'll take a look at it.
To make sure that...
I will tell you that we have a lot of sanitary lines that run along creek banks, because they run downhill. Right. Review the steep slope restrictions as they relate to retaining walls, foundations, and walkout basements. I think I understand, we'll take a look at that. LEDs, we kind of discussed that already. Restrictions on off-site premise signs, we discussed that also. Parking of commercial vehicles within the residential districts.
Right, now that, that was a question, is that a question again, whether that belongs in zoning or is just a separate ordinance, the same way the other?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, and I think there's some questions as to how to handle that, especially with people coming home with construction vehicles.
And what you're saying now is, Tom, yes, and there are construction vehicles, so park them.
Number ten, parking requirements for residential accessory dwellings. We'll take a look at that, I think I remember that conversation.
Yeah, that was the question of whether there'd be one space per occupant or one space per registered driver.
Right.
But also that one of the residents was concerned that she couldn't park her large car in the parking spaces such as they are now.
And actually, somebody recommended it just being maximum of one space per unit, no matter what. The new proposal. So in the way, number four, by the way, I sent the email to the groups...
I'm sorry, item eleven actually, I think it pertained to the specific size of the, typical size of the stalls.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was talking about something else.
That Ms. Neiman couldn't park her SUV in them anymore.
Yeah, I was talking about ten, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Number four, I sent the email to the groups, if anyone had any questions about that. I believe it was with reference to Riparian quarter, and I believe Mr. Wagle raised the question in the first place. He had some valid concerns, but hopefully I answered them.
I took a look at that today, and at first I was concerned, because it looked like you couldn't do any flood control measures. You could not construct any flood control measures within the, but then as I read further down, they are addressed in there, and you can... I was thinking specifically of what Upper Dublin did on, just behind this, just off the Dreschertown Road. They actually put in a flood control dam.
Oh, I see, right.
But after I read further, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
It is permitted.
So we're gonna move on to the last meeting, which was the February tenth meeting. If that's right?
Yes, please.
Okay. The tree list we're gonna work on. We understand number two, we'll look at that also. I think we wanted to provide some graphics for the buffer designs. Tree replacement within additional five hundred square feet of impervious coverage, the removal of six-inch trees and requirements to plant two new trees. I think it's safe to say that the tree replacement aspect of the zoning ordinance will be a topic of conversation. So I think we'll leave that in there as a general note. Masonry wall prohibited within the buffer. Review the language, stucco finish wall brick. We'll take a look at that also. Street walls as they relate to the site triangles.
That's taken care of in there, you're prohibited from putting street walls in site triangles.
Okay, we're gonna cross that out, he's right, that is a... Make sure we carry over the planning list at SALDA, we'll take care of that. That'll be, I think that's already in the SALDA list.
It is, yes.
SALDA master list.
There is a SALDA master list, I've been trying to find it for years.
It's a...
No, 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 no.
Oh.
It's a master list of changes and edits that we think either have to be made to the SALDA.
Thank you.
Number eight, define the word canopy or link it to the Woodlands then definition. I think we talked about that, that there was really no satisfactory definition of what canopy was, tree canopy. Tree canopy.
Well, there's like, oh, okay, never mind.
Number nine, number nine is along the same lines, we're definitely gonna have discussions about the tree replacement aspect. PC, number ten, would like all developments to include streetscapes.
Can we elaborate on that a little?
Yeah.
Was that providing, providing street furniture and things of that nature, landscaping along the, in the verge?
I kind of remember talking about...
I think there was just the thought that you should clarify when you do have these crosswalks and situations where pedestrians might not know whether cars are gonna yield to them or not. I think that might be what it was about.
Let's pull that out since we don't know what it is.
Okay, so, and that might be a non-zoning issue in pressure.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Check the requirement for signage for crosswalks. Oh, that was a long discussion on the why.
I think I think we remember talking about that as a Pendot issue also. Local requirements for the minimum separation of wind turbines, take a look at that. Add a required for emergency shut-off of accessory power. I think we talked about that as like a transfer switch for some of these alternatives.
But is that a zoning issue or is that a public safety issue?
Well, it's only a zoning issue in the sense that, well, I think we have to look at that, whether it's a zoning issue or if it's something that's picked up by the NEC.
Right.
Okay. So we'll put it in there as a question mark. Legal needs to address how commercial subdivisions are to be addressed. I think that had to do with...
How the breakdowns of certain properties can have the address...
Financial subdivisions, is the way that should actually be worded. It doesn't actually subdivide off, but it becomes financial subdivisions, where different ownerships could have within certain properties.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So we'll take a look at that. Review the language of outdoor storage and display of goods and materials. As I explained to you before, I think that's gonna be something that's gonna be picked up anyhow, because there's conversations about that already. And review advertisements on commercial properties as additional signage, i.e. video displays you can't, you see at gas stations. So this was a conversation about, those videos that happen on top of the gas pumps.
Yeah, and in the MCPC model sign ordinance that came out last year, they were not addressed. It was just something they chose not to tackle, because they weren't seen as a nuisance. I suppose if the brightness and the display size of the screens became such that it became a nuisance, then that would be a different issue, so...
Yeah, and I think the noise regulations, one thing that Bucks County recommended recently was to maybe have, you know, how you're not allowed to have deliveries at a certain time, maybe have these things shut off for a twenty-four-hour business between those same times.
Right.
So it's not louder.
We'll take a look at the county model ordinance and see what we want to do with that.
And then one other thing I saw recently on signs, they have them attached to light poles, lighting standards over in Porsha, I believe it is. They're very nice, but I've never seen that before, to the lighting standard in the parking lot. Not the ones closest to the street, but the...
What did they have on them?
Like the name of the business on the, like, the Starbucks on, is that Dreschertown Road and, ah, go to work at that thing.
Kathy, take a picture of the children.
Oh, I have it on my camera, actually.
Funny you should ask. Well, Kathy, what you're probably saying is sort of like, where the flags are downtown, they have the name of the country.
No, this is like a little, I've never seen this before, they look nice there, but...
Since we're talking about pictures, let me interject something here. The picture where we talk about entrance or coming to Abington, you know, you have a wonderful sign that says, "Welcome to Norris Town." Can we take a picture of welcome to Abington and put it in there instead of that?
Sure.
While we're talking about pictures, I think we should all take note that Larry was really looking good in the picture in the newspaper today.
Wait a minute, I was just told how fat I am.
It was an unfortunate angle.
The business section of the Enquirer, there was...
Is that on the minutes?
I would agree, it was an unfortunate angle for Larry.
I'm not sure he has a... Is there a fortunate angle?
No comment.
Okay, we're good, there's the end of this section. Include the massage ordinance requirements.
I know.
You guys are gonna...
Is there gonna be any discussion of the build two lines?
My comments were off when I was talking about...
No, good point, after all that, what did you show up?
I was talking about eleven, when you were talking about ten, so forget what I said, sorry.
I, there was no concern...
Well, our friend, Mr. Lehman raised...
But it was a parent, she didn't understand. It was a parent, she didn't understand it.
Yeah, I, I agree. Before we get too far, we still have Michael's three-page list.
We can hold what Michael did?
What?
Oh, we're not done?
We can be finished if, I think Michael's list is, Mark, to his credit, was attempting to just put together the full flavor of everything that's discussed. Michael's list here is pretty concise to specific zoning issues or draft issues that we wanted to take a look at. I don't know that we need to go through them point by point. They're already posted on the website. If you want to take a quick look at them and see if there's any things that you would like us to, or would like to discuss further, we can do that. Or we can just pass along, some of the stuff is repetitive or redundant to what we just viewed, as Mark and Larry, as Mark and Michael were taking notes at the same time.
Michael, do you need our opinion on any of these?
I suppose it's really what might be most important to you. I mean, one of the things had to do with the street wall, and the staff was like, we're moving away from the hedge, focusing more on the van keeping with the runner.
With the wall.
And, let's see, just looking over this quickly here.
Build two lines and on item three, shall be, to build, okay.
Yeah, so that's something we tell you in the language, that's, you know, something we can go through out, so...
Should we delete the word zoning or occupied buildings, should this be unoccupied?
Piece seventy-nine, it seemed like there was a bit of confusion about areas in floodplain. Currently yard areas are permitted in floodplain, because the proposed ordinance would prohibit it, so...
Yeah, Mark had, Mark had some concerns on that, his property's bigger than, but he's affected by it, so he gave us a good example of his own situation where you suddenly have a significantly reduced yard.
Right, so I don't know if that's gonna come up again or not, but this, you know, it's an important issue.
It needs to be, needs to be looked at.
What are we talking about?
The, finally, it seemed like to me, to me, there is possible confusion with lot areas in floodplain. Currently, you're allowed to have yard areas in floodplain, and the proposed ordinance would prohibit that.
Right.
But I think we're moving in that direction, so...
But would this take, this would affect any properties currently, I mean, existing properties?
You'd be grandfathered in, so you simply couldn't construct a new home in the floodplain.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, a new lot area.
Yeah, okay.
Required lot area in the floodplain.
Could you go to line C?
Yeah. Okay, so that's page one twenty-seven in the appendix, or, and the appendix for use regulations. With accessory dwelling units, there's a proposal to make them special exceptions. So I don't know, do you still feel that way or not?
Say this one more time, sorry about that.
Accessory dwelling units, there's a proposal to make them need a special exception. Let's see right now where they are, where and how they are permitted, I'm just turning to the use matrix. Accessory dwelling units, okay, so they are by right where they are permitted. And so that would, that would be places like the R one, two, three, and four, and land preservation overlay. So if anyone had any strong feelings about requiring them by special exception, speak now.
Well, regardless, we had to fill in the rest of A one, right?
Well, the way we're doing, we're handling the accessory uses here, if you see next to accessory uses, accessory uses, there's a note, accessory use is customarily incidental to a permitted use.
Right, right.
So be permitted unless expressly prohibited below.
And it's not that for most...
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't want to be...
How about NA?
Well, we didn't want to be hemmed in, so we wanted to allow the zoning officer a degree of discretion, so that's why it's not filled in.
Okay.
I mean, I'm basically supportive of the idea, so it would seem on the face of it that by rights is, is fine if the regulations are adequate to, you know, protect the property owners, right? I mean, that's the whole point.
Well, would this be like a...
It's, you could...
An office in one of these districts, and then they have an apartment upstairs, like that kind of...
No, not so much that, as you can, you can build out a portion of whether it's garage or a newly constructed thing or what have you, as say, an apartment.
Okay, so...
It's accessory to a primary dwelling.
But once they...
Primary dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Accessory dwelling units?
But once they are, once the use or the need is no longer there, i.e. bomb dies, you know, you have to dismantle it. It cannot remain as a rentable unit.
Well, how many houses are really in these S-I-G and S-whatever?
So, well, let me weigh in here. So, I, well, let me weigh in here. Remember, a special, in order for you to get a special exception approval, you have to show that there is a.
Hardship.
No, no.
Great.
No. Only if areas requires, or requires proof of hardship. Special exception has a much lower threshold. Actually, when, when it comes to a special exception, the Protestants have the burden of showing that there is a detriment to life safety, welfare, whatever. The burden actually falls to the Protestants as opposed to the person who's proposing the, the special exception. It's neither spec, and you recognize this from, uh, from Mark Jonas, it's either special nor an exception. So, it's an unfortunate name, so there is a very low threshold for a special exception, so if you're going to allow it as a special exception, it almost, there's very little that you can do.
Right, I mean, it's almost.
You're better off just leaving it as a use by right, instead of burdening the zoning or zoning hearing. If you believe that the zoning, if you believe that the dimensional requirements and the regulations around the ADU are substantial enough to regulate the accessory dwelling unit, then it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to be a special exception.
Right. To me, that's the whole point, is that if you're going to have it, it's have it as a, as a by rights, but have your regulations adequate for it.
And it, you know, at the same time, we, we did put special, special exceptions on, on many of these uses, and it does allow forum for the neighbors to come up and voice their specific concerns, as well as, uh, specific conditions.
Right, yeah.
Right here by the zoning hearing board. Uh, so it certainly, it certainly requires another layer of bureaucracy, more cost, and so, so on.
I mean, the whole point of these is, is an adjunct to help out people in, in certain situations, you know, where you need those temporary.
Remember, accessory dwelling units are, are established to provide housing for family members, either younger or older, um, without children, so on and so forth.
For limited duration.
I, I think it's more of a philosophical conversation that either we accept them or we don't accept them. I'm not so sure that we want to see them as special exceptions, conditional uses, or anything along those lines, so.
We already have a lot of restrictions in here.
Yeah, I think there's a substantial amount of.
I think they just go by rights.
Especially for ADUs, I think you, so.
My sense is it just, just be by, be by rights and the regulations are adequate.
Well, I think it's a question for the planning commission. First, do you endorse the idea of the ADUs? This is one of those hot button issues. Do you endorse the idea of an ADU of the, of the accessory dwelling unit? And then the second question would be whether you believe that it should have any further, uh, level of approval, like a special exception or conditional use.
If it's a special exception, does it need to come before the planning commission?
No, it comes before the zoning hearing board. Conditional use would come before the planning commission.
Right.
But I would tell you that you do not want to burden the, the board of commissioners with special, with, uh, conditional use hearings for ADUs.
No, I don't either. I personally am supportive of the concept of the ADU, I think they.
I'm supportive.
Right. You guys familiar with that? And, uh, I don't see the need to make it any more difficult.
I don't think it adds anything.
No.
Okay, um, sorry.
There's, there's one, um, I think in, um, on page two, number nine, number C. Is, is that just a correction that note 12 should have been note 13?
Yeah, yeah, that's more of a note to, uh.
But, but are we still saying in SI that a restaurant must be in a mixed-use building? Um, there was a lot of discussion about that when this restaurant was planned.
Well, actually, yeah, that's a good point. The second part of that note is not simply a minor thing, it's, it's more of a policy issue to discuss. Uh, yes, consider eliminating the mixed-use requirement in the future for a restaurant in the SI.
Right, so that's already been changed by the board of commissioners?
Yeah, that was a recent amendment.
So, that'll be a, that'll be a carryover from the amendment that the board of commissioners adopted for the switch bill.
One to make sure.
Anything else?
Uh, number 11, uh, I had a question about the signs. Uh, there was the mention about how signs must be prohibited from the right, or the prohibition of signs from the right of way must be stricken. And my question was, is that for all signs or just political signs?
Leave it in there, well, that's, that's further conversation we need to have at the solicitor's office.
And then Don brought up parking for ADUs. This is where we talked about one space for ADU. I guess this came up in Mark's notes too, but. So, I don't know if you wanted to take it up now, if we're just going to review it. I guess we're just going to.
I, I think it should be either reviewed, but I, my point is, I think what you're, you're typically at a.
I think we've, I think we've had that, I think that's in both lists, we'll, we'll definitely look at that, so, yeah.
And, uh, the parking for apartments, uh, sounds like we're going to discuss that at a small group level.
America's in definite ideas, okay.
Commissioner.
I did, I did a search and replace before I sent this to you. Page 246, all stumps of street trees, um, okay. All stumps of street trees shall be removed below the surface of the ground so that the top of the stump shall not project above the surface of the ground, stumps in remote areas, and I just said this is vague. How can you enforce remote areas? So, shall we say stump's not visible from a public street or a budding property, rather than remote areas?
No, it's fine.
Turbines shall be, okay, and I think this came up on a separate list too, so.
This came up, this was, there were some, there were some language questions, I think we have to look at that.
Yes, okay.
I remember that conversation.
We're going to handle that. And then, number 20, uh, I suspect that Mark and Larry would want to discuss this. Uh, this section refers to the administration and permits chapter of the zoning ordinance, but suits for injunctions and civil proceedings are not addressed in that chapter.
Uh, I caught it, yeah, I think it was just a matter of, um, placement in the ordinance.
Yeah, so I'd recommend discussing that at the small group level.
Yep.
Okay.
We should leave that on the recommendation list.
Okay, and then we have the zoning map, a change in zoning has been proposed for Old York Road near Hart, changing from R2 to PB. Mark wanted me to keep this in the notes. I'm not sure at which, at what point this would be addressed. I know this is related to the land development, it just came up.
Which one did just came up? The one that I had, uh, I was just with?
Yeah, was that patient first?
Patient first, no, it was just in that meeting.
Yeah. So, um.
Let that carry through its, uh, let that carry through its normal course.
Fine.
I think we take that off and let that carry through its normal course.
And then, um, someone had brought up this issue with another zoning ordinance in the county that's being worked on, and I realized, well, maybe we should at least consider this. Brew pubs and distilleries are a use that are becoming increasingly popular. And, uh, so I was wondering if you felt that we needed to create a separate use category for this, or whether it would be adequate to address this under the existing uses, such as taverns and retail operations.
Research.
Industrial operations.
Larry, the ones in Keswick, um, what did, those brew pubs, the one, well, there used to be one, um.
Yeah.
Where the cigar shop or something, across from the Keswick, next to Getfords, uh, Air Harps, there was a.
The one that, that one, the one that was across the street and closed?
Yes.
Yeah, and then, and then that other one was going to be proposed where the Irish shop. Yeah, and then the other one was proposed by the Irish shop that never opened.
Right.
Like, how were they looked at? Like, that's not you.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Wasn't that, wasn't that just a place that, that brewed beer and sold it? They didn't actually serve it?
No, I tried it.
No, you could sit there.
Beer was good, the food was awful.
I'd rather wait going into Glen Sights, I don't run into that.
No, I just wondered.
Ashley, so.
You should come, you should come by, it's not so bad.
How, how was it handled, that permitting staged by, and the other one?
It was a use by right and then it was.
How, what was the use?
Is it a bar versus a?
Okay, so then we don't need a separate category?
Well, I think there's a, I think Michael's right. There, there has been a change in some of these establishments, brew pubs and, and distilleries, um, where they've become, you know, the new thing.
Oh, yeah, they're great reuse.
I mean, there's going to be an Iron Hill Brewery over in Huntington Valley Shopping Center, uh, something to look at, I'm not, I'm not sure that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure they don't fit into our regulations now, but it's something we can look at.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it merits discussion. I'm not sure it merits a change. I mean, for example, Iron Hill just went into Ardmore, and, uh, you know, Ardmore is a, you know, small village.
How do they define, can we find out how they defined it? It would seem to me if you can define it as a use type and, and liken it to an existing use, that it would be addressed under the terms.
Sure, it could even be a subcategory within.
Right, it'd be the simplest way to go.
Yeah, I, I think we should talk about it at the staff level.
Yep.
Go to bed. Go home and go to bed.
Uh, let's see.
Larry wants to go home.
Just the memo called change of requirement for land development, uh, just co-location, whatever. And then there's the co-location of wireless communications equipment, so, um, Mark or I, or, or both of us will address the material for that.
Okay.
Oh, you're contagious, man, jeez.
Stephen, once again, thank you. Those are the notes that Michael and Mark developed for the draft, for our draft zoning ordinance, number two. We'll refine, we'll, uh, boil the list down, suggest the items every, one year, we'll combine them into one recommendation, formal recommendation list for the, for the planning commission to adopt at their next planning commission meeting, which will be on the 24th.
Okay.
We won't, I mean, there won't be much of a conversation. Well.
No, we're not.
We can discuss anything you want to discuss, I don't want to restrict conversation, but really, it would just be a review of the, of the edited list and a motion to, a motion to adopt the recommendations and, and, um, and pass them along to the board of commissioners for a review.
Will we get that revised list before a meeting?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll give my notes to Michael.
Would it be?
I'll give my notes to Michael and, uh, Michael, Michael and La, and Mark and.
Michael will have it tomorrow.
And it'll be part of your, it'll be part of your agenda.
Would it be, wouldn't be a recommendation for formal adoption? Would it just be to include these revisions in the next draft?
Yeah, I'll talk to Larry Mark about, we'll talk to Larry Mark about how to word it, but it'll, it's not a, it, it, it's not a, uh, recommendation to adopt draft two, it would be a net recommendation to, um, review, review the, the recommendations of the planning commission for further revisions to draft two. And pass that along to the board of commissioners for their consideration.
Okay.
And I caution you, I mean, you know, the board of commissioners has the choice to adopt whichever, whatever they want to, so there may be some things that don't survive or other things that get put in it. But I believe 90 to 95% of what the planning commission puts forth will be, will be considered and probably passed along to the zoning ordinance committee through the board of commissioners. Only because, you know, the time that you take and, and the amount of detail that you guys have put into the, into the review, so. Okay? Any other questions?
Nope. Motion to adjourn? I'll say aye, aye.
The rain?
It was earlier.
The rain until the morning, huh?
Yeah, it was this morning and it.
Much, take away all the snows and help the potholes.
I like the way the shadow falls in there in the sweater.